I'm the first person here.
And sleep on it.
Cool.
Which are you, is it too far?
I'm gonna go to the bathroom too.
I think someone pushed him to. Cause he just had a fear, you know, phobia.
Jack, I did, were you snuggling with your kitties?
Um.
Were you snuggling with your cats before you came here?
How'd you know that?
Fur.
Where?
Or, okay, no, I thought.
It's a smudge.
Oh, that's a smudge, okay. I thought it was a.
That's a smudge that that won't come on, it's like.
Okay, all right, from the hot one we passed, I was like, oh, that must be black cat.
No, it's uh, it's very interesting you mention that too, because I had, we got a Thursday night.
Yeah.
Nope.
A new cat?
Yeah, we lost one, I didn't tell you that.
Oh.
Yeah, kidney failure and uh, very sad, the gray one. And uh, so, uh, we, another, she's actually gray and uh, but the pheromone. Uh, because I was holding the cat. Jet, the black one, is now in her apartment upstairs on the, on the second floor. And I went upstairs and I went by her and she went. Yeah, just a whatever, whatever pheromones was there, just uh, so it's gonna take a little bit to uh. I'm watching, hopefully we don't end up with the.
Uh-oh.
That's fine, I mean, she's cute as hell, I mean, yeah.
Nice, well, I'm sorry for your loss with the other one.
Yeah, sad, sad, you know, you go from totally healthy four-year-old in late June and then plus half a body weight.
And they were already really tiny too.
Yeah, so she was only like a nine-pound cat, so uh, she just. Um, it, you know, very jaundiced and, and just. Uh, didn't pull up out of it and finally just said enough's enough. Yeah, it's hard, that's life though. It's just like with the bees, you know, you uh. You're losses, so. A lot of life.
We have Phil and it's six thirty-one.
Okay, hello, everybody. We've uh, coming to workshop and invited our town attorney Phil Sossier from Bristol Shore to give us some help here. What the item on the agenda this evening is to. Get better understanding of what we're able to do as a municipality, we understand that we can't prohibit and we can't limit numbers of registered caregivers. And, but we can regulate, and so the, the central question in my mind is at what point. Point between someone doing, which is essentially a home occupation, is a registered caregiver dispensing medical marijuana to their patients? And when does that tip over to being a full-blown retail operation with. Circles and arrows and signs and all the other things and traffic and all the, the various things, and it seems like, at least to me, I'm very vague on that particular point. And uh, so I'd like some clarity on that. And uh, and basically, where do we go from here? The other question that comes to mind is, uh, you know, seeing that places like Wyndham and Turner. I think Bruick has, has an ordinance, but uh, these have been on the books for at least a couple of years, maybe three. And have these ordinances that they have, as far as the, the regulation of registered caregivers on local level, been tested by a court challenge. The other piece is uh. Perhaps Phil, I mean, it seems like we, we go around in the discussion, at least on the council level, and I think we should make the distinction of what is a caregiver versus a registered caregiver. Based on the law. So unless anybody wants to kick off any more points on that, uh, I suggest we chew on those and then amplify as we need.
Jack?
Yes.
I'm just gonna, this Bill's drop, I uh, I think the, where we left it, the planning board left when we made recommendations to council a couple of months ago on the specific ordinances that we were dealing with. Which we got through, thankfully, was that uh, there was enough questions about um, other things outside of those ordinances, which were fairly narrow, those ordinances. They were large-scale cultivation, they were medical storefronts. Um, and uh, but the idea is that, is there a mechanism to, there seem to be a lot of questions unanswered about how to enforce. The law, whatever the law is, on um, on uh, on. Bonafide legal medical marijuana growth and caregivers, registered caregivers, all that. And ambitious people who want to move the line as far as they possibly can for profit. And we've seen uh, examples of that, and we've seen threatened examples of that. And uh, the thought was that if we have some kind of local ordinance, we have a means to um, step up as a community to say, no, that's not allowed. And right now, I don't think we have that, so that's my comment.
Um, you, you bring up a good point, Bill, because there's another piece that's come to my attention in the interceding days about changes in either law or rules. That redefine what a dispensary is, I mean, we understand what happened originally when they were eight, now it went to fourteen, but now there's. Uh, the potential uh, on the books, either by rule or by law, to go to unlimited. And so that's another, another piece to what you're saying, Bill. On, on what's an dispensary?
It's a question of what, what, what do we allow in our town by ordinance? And what we have to uh, do in addition to, to the existing ordinances to provide the control that we choose to have. As opposed to being reactionary all the time. And that, to, to date, we've been largely reactionary.
We came up with a list of questions, prior, Mallory, do you wanna ask the first one? Yeah, I think, or were we still waiting on, on a response, Jack, to yours?
I'd like to start off with those, I think that's a.
Okay.
Those are fundamental.
Okay.
To like caregivers versus registered caregivers and then what prevailing ordinances is in the state that have been enacted and pretend, potentially been tested the court.
Okay, so Phil, is there a difference between a registered caregiver and a caregiver?
So yeah, yes, there is a difference. Caregivers, if they're not registered, can only grow for members of their family or household. And, and that includes two caregivers who are qualifying patients if they're members of the same household, which is sort of redundant. Essentially, just think of it as, if you're, if you're family or household, you don't need to register with the state anymore. If you, if you do want to do something beyond that as a caregiver, provide for patients that are outside of your household or family. Um, run a caregiver retail store, you know, uh, or any of the other marijuana, quite frankly, establishments, medical marijuana establishments. Um, you need to register, and that allows you to not only uh, provide for other people, but also transfer. And accept marijuana to other registered caregivers and all kinds of other activities that registered caregivers are allowed to do. So that's the biggest difference.
Can I, can I follow that up with a, another question then? So for people who are just caregivers and are allowed to grow for themselves, is there a limit to what they can grow?
Um, there is, there is a limit. Let me just find it. So caregivers are allowed to cultivate up to thirty marijuana plants or five hundred square feet of plant canopy. Sixty immature marijuana plants and unlimited seedlings.
And registered caregivers?
Um, I'm not sure there's a difference necessarily, it's just that now they can go beyond that in terms of who they're transferring it to or selling it to.
Yep. That's a lot of plants.
Yeah.
So any caregiver, registered or unregistered, can only grow thirty, what, what you said, thirty plants or five hundred square feet of plants, correct?
Right, under the law, they just are allowed to do that, uh, we can't limit that.
Phil, is that, um, if you could have two caregivers under the same household, how, how many? What square footage can you have, or is that limited to a household?
Uh, that's limited to caregiver themselves.
Okay.
There, there, there may be some ability to regulate, so that, this is where contours of the, so we can regulate registered caregivers. But the, the provision in the municipal regulation statute um, doesn't use the word just caregiver, uses registered caregivers. So um. So we've been sort of careful about that, it's the local regulation statute is twenty-two, MRS twenty-four, twenty-nine D. And that's local regulation, and what that statute says, municipality may regulate registered caregivers. Caregiver retail stores, dispensaries, testing facilities, manufacturing facilities. So it doesn't say just caregivers themselves.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So Phil, to go back on, back to the, the not registered caregivers.
Yeah.
And you said, you said something about the number two, like two per household or something?
Uh, well, what I was getting at, so look, I'll read it to you directly, so not paraphrased, not paraphrasing. Um, but what it, but what it says is that a caregiver is not required to register with the state if they're providing. And I'm sorry, I just moved, I moved my cursor, but here it is. If, if they're providing for members of their family, members of their household. A qualifying patient that's a member of their household, or two caregivers who are qualifying patients, if those caregivers are members of the same household and assist one another with cultivation. I'm not quite, I'm not quite sure what that means, I'll be honest, that's why I didn't read it the first time, because it seems to me that they would still fall, if they ever been part of the same house, household. There's got, there could be a distinction there that I'm missing, but uh, I, I typically just, I mean, you don't have to register if you're providing for a qualification, qualifying patient that's a member of your household or a member of your family.
Phil, could two then, unregistered, so, so two caregivers at the same household have a thousand feet canopy legally? That the town cannot limit because they're two caregivers of the same residence?
Right, if they're just providing essentially for themselves to their household, it's sort of outside of a regulatory authority. It's when they start essentially acting like a business, which is really kind of what registered caregivers are, right? They're providing for other people, qualified patients, or providing a store where we have some regulatory authority.
And can you regis, uh, regulate the home? Uh, if, if, like my customers, as long as it's not leaving the premises, they're growing on site, it's being used on site. And can you make that connection that once people start picking up their prescription from that household, you know, uncle lives next door and he comes over and gets.
Yeah, I, I would be cautious about that, because if they're not registered, then they're allowed to by right, provide for members of their family and household. And they specifically, the statute specifically has a separate category for family. Suggesting that maybe the family doesn't live in the household.
Okay.
So Phil, if then.
Different story, we're talking about registered caregivers who are providing for unrelated patients, right?
Three caregivers being in the same home and have fifteen square feet, legally fifteen hundred rather, uh, of canopy.
I mean, yeah, you could keep going with that, but the issue is that they're still limited to just their family and household, right? So that's the limiting factor for the unregistered, if you will. At a certain point, it doesn't make sense to continue, right, to continue to grow and grow, right, because there's no one to give it to. Um, the, the, it's, they can only provide for their family and household, so, but yes, technically each caregiver is allowed a certain amount of harvested marijuana and, and plants. For sure, it's, it's by caregiver, not by household, is how you categorize it, but, but from a practical perspective. You only really need to start having that amount of grown if you're getting into the registered category. Right, because you're gonna need to give it to somebody, I mean, I don't. So.
The state hasn't. There's no enforcement. Of that size, there's no quality control size, and if it's being used for personal consumption or if it's being distributed.
That's a good question, I mean, technically, yeah, the, the state is, you know, the state is in charge of enforcing. But the level enforcement, I'm not sure how much that happens or not, I do know that they do go out, and especially upon request, and will, and will inspect. But it seems to me, and this is more anecdotal than, than actual, is that they seem to me to be more inspecting on the kind of commercial side, if you will.
Yep.
To the extent that there's a business, right, a, a manufacturing facility, testing facility, those kind of things, retail stores, and they'll, I've seen some municipalities. Um, work together with the state to sort of inspect and work with the homeowners or the business owners for, you know, that kind of compliance.
Phil, related, related question on that, so the state does, does what they do, they don't do what they don't do regarding um, the office of marijuana policy and whatnot and enforcement. Are, can others enforce the law? Can municipalities, can code enforcement officers, can police, can state police, are, are there other people that are legally allowed to say this is against the law, other than the state marijuana policy office?
Well, it's a good question, the statute is specifically says, this is the administration statute, says the department shall administer and enforce this chapter and any rules, that's all it says. Sometimes you will see, and you know, law enforcement or municipalities.
So, so right now, right now, there's, there's nothing anybody can do locally unless you get the state office of marijuana policy to agree to do it.
Right, unless you have your own ordinance, which is the benefit of.
That's, that's where I'm headed.
Yes, exactly, which is why, why it's, you know, a lot of towns have found it helpful to have their own ordinances, because then you can enforce your ordinance.
Okay.
Um, otherwise, you're kind of working with the state, so towns will sort of refer.
So if, if, if a situation happens. Define the situation you wanted to find, where someone is moving the boundaries of what you just described as being legal for either caregivers or registered caregivers among a canopy.
Right.
Doing all that, who they sell to, how much they sell to, how they sell, if people are moving the boundaries of that. Uh, uh, to what would seem to be unreasonable and clearly illegal things. We can't talk about that, we can't take action on that unless we have a local ordinance, is that right?
Right, you need to be having your own enforcement mechanism, that's right, what you're left with is, is, is referring those issues to the state.
Right, so right now, um, um, that's our situation, there's no one in town who can enforce anything without a ordinance, which we don't now have.
Right, so yeah, towns that haven't adopted ordinances are left with whatever they have on their books related to retail generally, or, you know, things like that.
We have, we have, we have medical storefronts, and that's a zoning and code compliance thing.
Right.
Presumably, we have uh, the cultivation thing, if anybody ever did one, and that would be under code enforcement and so forth, but beyond those two things on which we have ordinances, we have no jurisdiction yet.
Right.
Good.
And, and just to circle back, and it's, it's not clear to me that you could adopt ordinances related to the personal growth. And non-registered caregiver provisions, the, the local regulation specifically says we have the authority to regulate registered caregivers.
Okay, yeah, well, it sounds, sounds to me that that's, if we're gonna do something, it should be on, on the registered caregiver side.
Right.
Because the caregiver side is, the state gave that away.
Yeah, and what's interesting, we've gone over this, I know, a lot of times, Bill, and there's some discrepancies between the care, the uh, medical marijuana side and the adult use side where. Um, for growing the same plant, there can be different rules.
Right.
And on the, on the adult use, which is what it's called, adult use side, we can have some reasonable regulations around the um, personal growth. As long as it doesn't prohibit that, prohibit the growth um, or limit it anyway, the amount of people can grow, but what we can do, for example, I had a question earlier today, is we may be able to have setbacks, for example, if you don't like, you know, setback from a lot line or something like that.
Yeah.
But the medical side does not, does not note that.
Got it.
So, yeah, and of course, the medical side was around earlier than the, than the adult use side.
I'll ask another question, then I'll get out of the way.
Yeah.
And, and, and Jack kind of started this question, and we've had uh. References to discussions over the last six months or so about uh, ordinances in Wyndham and a couple others. Um, has there been anything that's happened that in the state legislation where those ordinances are no longer valid? Uh, or is there, there's been no, if they, if they're, if they're regulating uh, local marijuana activities, including registered caregivers. Is there, is that, is that approach still a legal approach that those towns have taken?
Yeah, for the most part, without looking at those specific provisions you're talking about, I mean, there were some, there were some uh, ordinances in place prior to the recent iteration in twenty eighteen. Um, and so there could be some outdated, outdated ordinances, but generally, so before twenty eighteen, I know we've gone over this before, but just a level set with everyone in the room, twenty eighteen. Was when the state legislature did sort of a wholesale amendment of the adult, of the, of the medical marijuana statutes, they made a number of changes. And, and most importantly, they changed all of these categories to opt-in only, that was the biggest change, it used to be, you had to opt out.
Right.
And so you saw a lot of ordinances prior to twenty eighteen that either opted out, so sometimes just opted out, and honestly, they didn't need to do anything after twenty eighteen, because it was already, then it came opt-in, and if they didn't want it, they didn't get, you know, they didn't have it. Or they tacitly allowed certain types of uses, because they didn't think they could regulate them, because there was a question before twenty eighteen, how far can we regulate? There was an open question about that before twenty eighteen.
So, so there's been no uh, legislation since twenty eighteen that affects what a community can do and can't do?
Uh, that's right, I mean, there's been a number of tweaks since twenty eighteen, I mean, every session, they do change the law, but it's been around the edges for the most part.
Okay.
Uh, the number of plants, um.
Right, yeah.
Importantly, this could actually gets to, gets to, I guess, a question about, um, how do you define a, a retail store? We finally got a definition for that, we didn't have a definition for caregiver retail store, and they first did the opt-in, and now we do. For example, so they, they've been adding, they've been sort of adding to the statute and, and tweaking it for the last three years since the twenty eighteen rewrite.
Yep.
Every year, well, I'm sure there'll be more every year, tweaks to it.
But there's nothing, nothing's happened in the last year that substantially changes what a town can do by ordinance or not.
Not that I'm aware of, that, the, the general local regulation statute really hasn't changed in, in substance.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it seems like from a caregiver standpoint and a non-registered caregiver standpoint, there's nothing really we can do there, I think we need to move on from that, but from a registered caregiver standpoint. Phil, you've made it clear tonight and on numerous other occasions that we can regulate registered. Um, can you just elaborate a little bit on the ways in which we could approach doing that?
Sure, so the state law allows us to, allows municipalities to register, to regulate registered caregivers. Registered caregiver retail stores, registered dispensaries, testing facilities and manufacture, manufacturing facilities, that's what the statute says. Um, what it, it does have a one limitation, or a couple limitations on registered caregivers, is, is that we cannot, although we can regulate registered caregivers, we may not prohibit or limit the number. Of registered caregivers in a municipality, so you couldn't put a cap, for example, on registered caregivers, you can put a cap on the other four categories. And some towns have done that, they said, well, we want two retail stores, you're allowed to do that, for example. Um, but you can't say we only want two registered caregivers. You, you have, can't do that, what you could do is have what we call reasonable regulations, that hasn't been completely fleshed out, and unfortunately, we don't have a, a case law yet, there haven't been a lot of cases. Uh, reported cases, but generally, what it's understood to mean is you could have, um, for example, some communities have, have prohibited registered caregivers from having. Uh, retail stores in their homes, or opposite, some towns have said, you can, but you need to have. A, in fact, one of your neighboring towns, you need to have a home occupation license for that, right? There's different, there's different ways of approaching it, but that's the type of regulation. Um, uh, a registered caregiver, the other one, and I know this is one we've talked about extensively, and a lot of towns have done this, is creating a new category called medical marijuana cultivation facility. That's not one of the sta, that's not one of the categories in the statute that's opt-in, but it's a way of regulating caregivers, so to speak, registered caregivers. By, you know, decide, you know, saying where you can grow in certain parts of town, if you qualify as that type of use, um, how the size of that, that kind of thing. Um, how the size of that, that kind of thing.
Sorry, that mean we can. We could. Allow. Registered caregivers to grow in only certain parts of town?
We've done that.
Yeah, that was what we were moratorium was essentially, you created this category of use called medical marijuana cultivation facility, which are registered caregivers growing, essentially. And um, you define in different ways. I think you defined it in a way that was mostly defined, which is when you, when a caregiver, one or more caregivers are growing outside of their home. Is typically, it's a, it's a definition that's a municipally made definition, so it's not in the statute. Um, but that's, yes, so then you regulate them that way. That's never been challenged to this point, and a number of communities have adopted that land use category. So essentially said.
Yeah, well, we, oh, we, we didn't, and we didn't deal with individual caregivers. We dealt with caregivers joined together.
It was two or more, that's right. You did two or more outside of their home, right?
Whatever it was, and it was a certain square footage that that they could, they could do conglomerate into, so, but but individual registered caregivers, we didn't touch.
And we, in that, that we passed the way we defined it, I don't remember the language off the top of my head specifically, but like it's both. Multiple, but also specifically calls out like a a location that is not their primary residence. So I think what we're looking to address now is registered caregivers. Growing in their primary residence.
Right.
And. Speaking for myself, just trying to put some parameters and performance standards around that, so that we don't end up with a large scale. Growth facility and perhaps our residential areas. So I know there was, um. The example, I'm sure I'm probably sick of he he hearing it, but like, if myself, my husband and my daughter all decided, or all were registered caregivers.
Right.
I understand it today, is we don't have an ordinance in place, so theoretically, I could use my barn in the back of my. Property to grow fifteen hundred square foot of canopy right now, and I think that's sort of the scenario. At least for myself, I I'd like to kind of put some some rules around like. Canopy size, um, to to prevent something like that from happening in our. More residential area.
Well, or even, or even a a single person, without conglomerating to two or three, if if one registered caregiver, as I said before. Uh, uh, pushes the rules and goes to way over uh, five hundred square feet of growth and so many plants. And starts selling out of their house without, you know, just stuff that's not. Not uh, contemplated in the state law, but those are the things that I'd be interested in, making sure that we had a handle on, so that. It's not just conglomerated registered caregivers, it's individual caregivers that go, that push the boundaries of of the law.
Yeah, so there's two examples I can think of that responded, the two examples I just heard. One is I I know. Regulations that have been enacted that um, allow a registered caregiver to grow in their home with a home occupation license, but they cannot have any. Uh, patient, uh, they can't, they can't deliver on site, like they just put it right in the ordinance. Um, uh, similar to uh, what you think of as some home occupations, right, was they, they're supposed to. Sort of work within their neighborhood, and you don't want sort of coming and going sometimes, so they just regulate it that way. They say, well, okay, well, you can do it, but you, we're not gonna have any kind of. Not, it's not a retail store, but we don't want any kind of traffic.
Yeah.
Um, so that's why you're doing with it. And then the other one I heard was, you know, the multiple registered caregivers. In my view, you could limit the number of registered caregivers who are operating out of a home. Um, you, you know, uh. In fact, I know there's one neighboring town that does that near you. Um, you can have one care, registered caregiver uh, per household, in if uh, for a home-based occupation, for example. Um, so that's, that's the other way you can deal with it. You wouldn't be able to. You could still have other people growing if they're not registered, so you. But I think you would limit them, you would still live, you have to limit the size that way.
Is is licensing, a can can licensing be an integral part of what we're talking about, rather than just make the rules?
Yes, you could require, you know, that's what I'm talking about, home base, you know, you could have a license for businesses, any kind of.
In my, in my view, without a license, this is all hocus pocus.
License or a land use permit of some kind, eith- either way, it's a way to regulate. Yeah.
The licensing topic, um. I seem to understand that we could not like go to the state and ask them for a list of registered caregivers.
Right.
How, so like, it seems as if we were to, if we were to implement any sort of licensing. That that would have to be almost like a voluntary thing for those registered caregivers to come forward to us and say, I am a registered caregiver. Am I misunderstanding that?
Um, I think there would be some level of voluntariness compliance, but I do think that there are, there are. Inspections that go on and complaints, you know, responses to complaints that code officers are getting. So that's how, that's the other way. So if you see, if someone sees an operation out there, it becomes a code issue, and.
Yeah, and if it's not licensed, then then, and a license is required, then the town can. Take action on it with knowledge of it, because they 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 go to them and say, where's your license? And they, if they haven't got a license, then there's a problem.
That's right. There's various ways of investigating these things, you know, sometimes I've seen people. People openly, you know, advertise on the internet, that's really easy to find. Quite frankly, I've seen that being used as as evidence in here. Um, and uh, similar to, uh, I know it's a completely different area, but same thing with like the Airbnb. Towns are regulating now, you don't always know. Um, if people are going in and, you know, there's ways to do that. They they look on listings, they look online, that kind of thing. That's how they they find out.
Yeah.
They weren't registered. We have to take it to the Office of Marijuana Policy. Because if they weren't registered.
We could, they weren't a main, state of main registered caregiver, yes, but then there, there's this additional piece of. If we added licensing and there was a complaint. And then it was found that whomever it was, a license like the town, right?
But that only applies to solve that problem if they're a registered caregiver.
Right, we can't do anything with just caregivers.
Right.
And are we, um, is our code enforcement or whoever goes out there, is it uh, walking a a. Uh, thin line if they are just caregivers? Like, is that a, that's what I feel like I'm hearing, is that there's angst or concern that the people that would. The town would be sending out there would be walking in or or knocking on the door of a caregiver and that they're totally fine to be doing it. Does that make sense? How do we mitigate that concern?
It's a good question. I mean, I think there's always gonna be some level of discretion that code officers have to employ when they investigate any. Alleged violation of a land use ordinance, um, or license. Um, obviously, they can only do what they can find out, and there is a level of. Of voluntariness that you sort of hope for, but not, you don't always get. Um, there may be other investigations you can do, but it is a valid concern. I mean, there are people out there who are allowed to grow. It's it's legal under main law today. Right, and um, and so that does get more complicated when you've got growing that. That falls within a regulate, regulated area. It just, it is more complicated now, because everyone can grow now, first of all, right? We're, we're only talking about, called it, you know, medical, but. Everyone can grow now if you want to, if you're over twenty one. So that's the other, you know, on the adult use side.
So let's go back to the.
Question with, if there is a problem, do we go to the Office of Medical Marijuana Policy to see if they want to reconsider if this person. Should be a registered caregiver?
Yeah, I think that's the way it would work, right? You would, you make a complaint. Or you request for investigation with the Office of Marijuana Policy. And I know that they've come out, I, I know that they've come out and done inspections. In various places. I mean, there, I don't know how many people they're working for this point, so they, you know, they're limited by their staffing, but. But they do come out, they do investigate.
So if we, if we had a, if we had a license for a, for a registered caregiver, but we can't. We can't uh, uh, going in, identify who these registered caregivers are.
Right.
That, that, that's a fact, right? So we don't know.
There's privacy, yeah, the the way that the law is set up is there privacy considerations. In fact, we can't even. We can't even let people know. So it 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 becomes sort of a catch twenty two in some ways, because there's privacy considerations with.
If if we, if we require, if we required a license of registered caregivers with whatever we put on it. And that's fine, and then people can come get licenses which want to.
Yeah.
But others who don't want to, we don't know who they are. And we can't know who they are. But if, but if someone, but if someone's pushing the boundaries like I'm talking about, and it's obvious that they're, they're pushing the boundaries. We can go out and say, okay, who are you? Can we ask them? Can we ask them if they're registered caregiver?
Well, you can, you, you don't need to really ask them, you, because really, it's not about whether, really, it's that you've seen that they're growing, for, I mean, that they're, they're selling to other people, right? That, I mean, that's the issue.
Well, there, there's a scale of growing. There are people who are allegedly growing way beyond the limits, and there are people who are allegedly selling out of their. Homes illegally.
Right, yeah, if you have an ordinance that, you know, limit, regulates caregivers, you can ask registered characters, you can ask them if they're, to try to qualify now. Getting the information might be a little more difficult, but I don't, there's no prohibition on asking, that I know of.
And and if you have a license requirement, then show me your license. Okay, so if you're, if you're not licensing, um. Just caregivers, but the scope is obviously more than a caregiver scope, then they, then you you still have a a license enforcement uh, potential, right?
That's right. Yeah, and to the extent that people are, you know, because I know that there's a lot of concerns about confidentiality of the caregiver community. And so the way that it's been often done, and some ordinances specifically address this, is it's, and I think maybe even the state rules have it, I don't have it in front of me, is that. Um, to the extent, they say you're, you're coming to get your license, and you need to obviously show, the only reason why you'd be getting your license is because you're a registered caregiver. So you would show your registered caregiver license, but then it's typically not kept in a file.
Right.
Or it's kept in a file that says confidential and not shared, if there's a FO request, for example, not put out on any municipal list. That registration itself. But there, there has to be a process of like, we need to see it, right? We, I do grappled that before, so you you look at it, you see it. And you give it back, or you put it, you make, and mark it confidential in the file.
Yeah, yeah. So. Is that the direction that we're, where I think that's the direction we're heading in, isn't it? By by sort of consensus here? That's what we can, that's what we can do. We can't do other things. We can do that.
And so, Phil, we could, if we put together an ordinance that. Performance standards, um, like canopy size, hours of operation, things like that, if a. In addition to licensing, if a complaint, for example, were to come in where some investigation was warranted. If it was found that whomever it is, is either growing more canopy size than they are supposed to based on our ordinance. Then that could be, that then that, that's reason for sort of enforcement for us, but also. If they didn't have a license registered with the town of South Fork, like that could also be another.
Right, that's right, yeah. That's right.
Um, so I, question on on that, like, if we, if we pretend like we've implemented something like that, how does. That, how could that potentially impact existing. Operations that existed prior to the ordinance?
So we can't, uh, yeah, so, um. The medical marijuana law has a grandfathering provision. And I know we've talked about before, so it's, it's medical marijuana establishments that were in operation prior to, prior to December thirteenth, twenty eighteen. That were operating with municipal approval. Uh, can't be, you have to allow, be allowed to continue to operate.
Okay.
So, that's in, that's specifically in the statute. Now, there's some nuances there, like what does it mean to be operating within municipal approval? We know what that means now, we didn't when the statute was first written, but that's another definition the legislature added after the fact. Um, and it means essentially that you have, not essentially, it specifically means that, um. Uh, an examination and approval of the store dispensary facility for the use of the premises, um. Including, but not limited to, conditional use permit, site plan approval, it does not include just a building permit, electrical permit. Or other type of permit that didn't specifically address the use. That was a big issue, because prior to that date, sometimes someone would just get the building permit, that's all it said, building permit for commercial. And try to argue that that was sort of, that was uh, use, and what the statute status is, no, it's got to have addressed the use. So in other words, the town gave permission for a retail store, medical marijuana retail store in the permit.
Okay.
But but prior to that point. From a medical marijuana retail store to exist. We would have had to opt in.
So, well, yeah, well, that's the, well, that's the one, yeah.
Didn't create a medical marijuana retail store. We didn't opt in on that until January fourteen to two thousand twenty.
So you probably don't have anything in that category where, where it comes up. So some towns, it does come up, and that's why they need to do it, because. I I alluded to this, because I didn't, we didn't need to go into it much here in this town, but there were. There, first of all, there was not a category called caregiver retail store prior to just twenty eighteen. That category didn't exist. And so what you end up seeing was, um, and there were a lot of, there was a lot of news articles about this. Because it was a gray area on whether registered caregivers. Could essentially operate a retail store, because there was nothing in the law that specifically says that they couldn't. And so there were people pushing the envelope. And opening retail stores in a number of towns throughout the state. And part of the reason why is because a lot of municipal attorneys and others thought. That uh, that we were preempted from regulating caregivers at that point. So e- everyone sort of was in a, we didn't know what to, a lot of people didn't know what to do. And so they, essentially, some towns did explicitly allow retail stores to open. Now, that's one of the, so that's why in twenty eighteen, it, that, one of the, one of the really strong things that happened from municipal perspective is, first of all, we have a sentence in there that says. We can regulate them specifically. It creates the retail store category, and it made it opt. In, so that, that's why it's a number of area, that's why it's a number of things that sort of uh, changed in twenty eighteen.
Only if something, only if a store was operating before December thirteenth, twenty eighteen. Would it be potentially grandfathered?
Right, that's right, in my view, that's right, yeah.
What did you say? And then town approval of the use?
That was after twenty eight, and that was after uh, twenty eighteen, correct? That if it's operating. It had to have been explicitly approved for that use by the town?
That's right, and you know, there's obviously, even though we have a definition, which is great, there's still gonna be nuance, like there always is in the law, and so now the question is, you know, maybe you didn't say. Caregiver retail store on the permit, but all the application materials were very explicit. In other words, they weren't hiding anything. Right, like they asked for, they told the town what they were doing, and they got a permit for that. Um, that, that's where we start getting to a fact-based analysis. It's hard to. Do policy over, but but those are the kind of issues that we're seeing now, is trying to cipher out, what does it mean? Was was this operating with municipal approval or not? That kind of thing. There was also this other category, which we've talked about, which didn't exist prior to twenty eighteen and still doesn't exist, which are. Uh, medical bear, the cultivation facilities, right, and so. That's actually where you saw more operating. Um, prior to twenty eighteen, because that was just allowed, right? Caregivers are allowed to grow prior to, you know, exactly, particularly under the old law. And so we saw caregiver retail, uh, sort of a cultivation facilities pop up, oftentimes with municipal approval, because they kept, they were. Uh, considered agriculture for the most part, um, or some other land use category.
Phil, could you, I'm sorry, could you just clarify? I think you might have touched on this, and I just didn't quite get it, but, um. For the thirty or so registered caregivers who we have in our store, who are interspersed in all sorts of neighborhoods, um. The fact that people may come to their house and pick up their medical marijuana, does that qualify as a retail store then? Does that make them a retail store, whether they built a store or not?
No, not necessarily. That's a good question. Hershey, and I, that's, I was gonna get back to that, because I was like, I think the first question that was raised, which is, what is a retail store? Right, and, um, I, I mean, there's still gray area. For sure, and these are the kind of questions every day that municipalities are trying to struggle with, is what is a retail store? But we actually have, at least we have a definition now, which we didn't used to have. So the legislature adopted a definition. Of a retail store, and what it says is, and I'll just read, it's one sentence. A caregiver retail store means a store that has attributes generally associated with retail stores. Including, but not limited to, a fixed location, a sign. Regular business hours, accessibility to the public, and sales of goods or services directly to consumer. And that's used by a registered caregiver to offer marijuana plants, for harvesting marijuana for sale to qualifying patients. So.
Oh, so you could have a shed on your property and not have a sign. And have it be open nine to five, but not really call it a retail store?
Yeah, and the other thing I'm seeing, that's right, and the other thing I'm seeing arguments for, and sometimes they are successful arguments, sometimes they're not, depending on the town, and depending on the. Zoning board, right, is, um. Is this issue of are they open, accessible to the public? That becomes a question. And so some caregivers are, have successfully argued in certain places that. If if they're only selling to their qualifying patients, and it's appointment only, and it's, you can't walk in, for example. It's appointment only or something like that, that that's not a retail store, because it's not accessible to the public. And, you know, but again, this, this is one of the nuances, that is, it is a little bit difficult to. To get to. What we, what generally, though, you're, where you started was, you know, if someone's just selling, you know, has a house, you know, they're, they're, they're a registered caregiver. Small time out of their house kind of thing, they have their patients stop by and pick up from time to time. Small time out of their house kind of thing, they have their patients stop by and pick up from time to time. Might not qualify now that we have a definition, because the definition actually made it a little more difficult to qualify in my mind. Right? It it says it has the attributes of a retail store, including fixed locations, sign. You know, regular business hours, accessibility to the public, that kind of thing. But the way around that is, that again, I know at least one community that has done this and has not been challenged. Is to the extent that you would allow a registered caregiver. To operate in their home, and I think that you should at least likely allow at least one. To not run afoul, um, is that they've prohibited. The distribution of the product from from a home. Right? So that's one way to regulate, for example.
So how does, but where would that leave somebody? I mean, if if you were a registered caregiver, and you had, I don't know, twenty or thirty or forty patients, or however many you could in your five hundred foot canopy. Can't be, and they have to come to your house to pick up their marijuana, and you don't have really what's considered a store. And they can't go in your home to get it. Wha- what is it like, a deal in your driveway then? I mean, how do they actually sell their product?
It's delivery service, it becomes a delivery service.
It has, but then it has to become a delivery service.
If if that's the way you want to go. Again, I'm not saying every community has done this, but I'm aware of at least one community that's regulated that way. That's prohibited kind of the distribution out of homes for registered for registered caregivers.
Phil, what about if you had a uh a use, you said, was it December eighteen, two thousand and?
Uh, December thirteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Eighteen, okay, one eight. What about you have a, you know, grandfathered use and expansion, whether it's. You know, expansion of the business and or. Buildings or, I don't know, would they still then fall into the? The town's regulations, they'd have to fall into the town drags, or?
Yeah, that's a good question, David. No, I don't, I don't read that as saying that they have the right to expand, essentially what they become is a legally non-conforming use. Right, they're grandfathered, so they would have to comply with any of the existing legally non-comformant provisions. And any limitations on the expansions of those types of uses, which do vary by municipality.
But if someone started a retail operation after December thirteen, two thousand eighteen. And in South Berwick, and they didn't have, and we hadn't opted in yet. Until two thousand twenty, that would that would be counter to the law, right?
Right. Yeah, because the state, the law specifically says no one can even operate such a facility unless they receive municipal approval.
So if they started that after two thousand thirteen, uh, two thousand eight, December thirteen, two thousand eighteen.
Yeah.
At that point, the state said, you can't do this. A retail operation. Uh, unless the town has opted in and you go with their regulations, so it you, that would not be legal to do that between then and. Uh, two thousand twenty, when we did our 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 ordinance.
That's right. Uh, it says, you know, the statute specifically says retail stores and the other categories that are not operating. As of that date are not allowed to operate. Unless the municipality has voted to opt in to allow them.
There's no authority for someone to open a retail shop between two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty.
Without, right, it became immediately an opt-in as of that date, December thirteenth.
Thank you.
There's.
A law, that's where that date comes from, that was when the law went into effect.
I'd say there's another aspect to. This registration piece, and that is for. Uh, the sale of of edibles. Uh, we're essentially producing a food product. And as I know, the uh, the licenses required for that is a food and fuel license application to the Department of Agriculture.
Right.
And there's several license types, retail. Could be drugstore, baked goods. Prepackaged food, produce fresh, produce processed. Vacuum packing food, those are just. Items that I've highlighted off the laundry list of both. Uh, four columns of of uses. So that's another separate license. That would be required in order to operate that, and I'm interested in. A registered caregiver. Uh, branching out into dispensing of these particular items as call prepared foods.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right, that um. Any food, so they can manufacture products and concentrate, because there's some products that are not considered food. But if it's considered food, um, then you need a state food license. And if you use um inherently hazardous substances to produce it. Um, for certain types of extraction, then you have to be, you have to be regulated as a manufacturing facility, you get into the area called manufacturing facilities. And that requires a separate license from the state, because it's often using hazardous materials to do that work, sometimes, or they're allowed to, I should say.
Yeah, and do those categories fall into the, fall into the? The opt-in portions of the of the law for municipalities?
Uh. No. So the caregivers, just caregivers themselves are allowed to, whether they're registered or not, can manufacture marijuana products and. Uh, concentrate for medical use, except if they are, if they manufactured food, they need a food license. Um, is what it says. So that's just caregivers. And registered caregivers are not often either, just registered caregivers on their own are not often. Categories.
I I guess what I'm getting at, one part of this uh is that. When. When we, I don't know, do as far as um. Uh, food safety or those kind of checks that would happen. To a restaurant or other people preparing food. Um, would would that? Fall into a category eligible for local regulation?
Um, yeah, it could, you could decide to have, for example, food regulation. Um, if you do it today, you could tack it on, or it may already qualify, quite frankly. Because the statute for caregiver, when it talks about food, it just simply refers to food and. Kicks you over to the existing food license statute. Just like any other food that you prepare, if you make cupcakes at home, for example, for sale. You would have to get some sort of food license.
If I could go back to the um, the thing that I learned tonight about the operating with municipal approval.
Yeah.
That a little bit, um, I'm wondering, so you've said that just pulling a building permit. Doesn't apply unless it was explicitly stated that that was for the purpose, um. But I'm wondering how broad municipal approval is, uh, could discussing it in a public meeting? Grant, it looks like, let's just say that it was stated in a town council meeting that someone was grandfathered. But that. Serve as um. A substantive for proving that it was uh operating under town approval?
It could, if that's, if if part of what the was discussed was that it was, when it was approved, they knew what they were proving, in other words. Because what it's getting at is whether there's some examination and knowledge of what we were proven. Uh, and again, we're talking about, just so I'm clear, because I think there's a little confusion, we're talking about just the four opt-in categories right now. That's the only thing that the grandfathering applies to.
The store? Yes.
Yeah, yeah, stores, dispensaries, testing, manufacturing, so, yeah.
Phil, if we had, if it's like, if we were to um. Add performance standards and also add some licensing components to that, where um. You know, a license issued by the town of South Berwick is required to operate. With that. I'm assuming with the. There would be like sort of some checkboxes, I guess, required in order for someone to obtain the license, like different. To me. So. So if we had an operation that was existing, and there was a complaint or something that needed to be investigated, and then it was found that that business didn't have a license. They then apply for the license? To remain operational, or? I I was that kind of to decide?
Well, true, yes, yeah, so it would, they would in be in violation. And there's some, you know, enforcement discretion that can happen with municipalities, particularly when you first adopt a license, you know, ordinance, sometimes you give people a little extra time. To comply, so you you'll get the information out there. Um, but yeah, if if a license requirement is in place, and you find, and it says, because typically what those ordinance to say is, no business can operate without a license. And so if someone is operating without a license, that means they're technically violation, you bring up. You know, notice of violation against them, and then you could either. Allow it after the fact, they could have an after fact application, back, one of the requirements, you'd usually say, you must now apply for a license, um, if you're going to continue operating. And then usually there's some violate enforcement provisions, penalties, sometimes, that kind of thing.
You know, that they, if they then go to kind of apply for the license, but then don't meet all the criteria required for the license. Then they can't get the license, then they can't operate.
Right. Right.
Okay, now. Can can we get into? The the changes in law or regulation regarding dispensaries?
Um, yeah, sure, let me pull that up.
I, this is a, I don't have any reference to that, um, as far as looking it up or anything, it was just referred to me verbally. That there was some relaxation of. Of of the limitation previously uh designating. What is a dispensary and where they can be? I think it went from eight to fourteen, and now is it? It's those sunsetted, so now we're unlimited? As far as dispensary goes, because if that's the case. We're going to have a whole new wave. Of potential expanded retail stores like Bill was referring to.
Yeah, so so you're absolutely right. Um, is that prior to twenty eighteen, a different date, twenty eighteen, uh, there were eight allowed, and it was a process. And typically was, uh, it was regulated by DHHS, and it was around the state, so you'd have at least certain number of dispensaries around the state in different areas. Um, then there was an interim interim provision that allowed um an additional six more after twenty eighteen. And um. And then now, as of January one, twenty twenty one, there is no more limit. Um. So uh. So now it's a, so that is still an opt-in, right? So if you don't opt in, they're just not allowed in your community.
Right, that was my first reaction. If that's opt-in, why are we even talking about it?
Yeah, if you don't want a dispensary, you don't have to opt in. If you do want to, you can say, we don't want more than one, you can, you can, you can limit them, you can zone them. Um, you have pretty much unlimited regulatory authority on where you, how you want to regulate them, but you have to opt in to even allow them.
Phil, from my understanding is that the law changed, at least right now, so that a municipality could opt in for a storefront. To have the ability for unlimited growth. Correct? But we have to give approval for a storefront? To have that unlimited growth potential?
I'm not sure, could you, I know what you mean by unlimited growth, do you mean just like if you would allow, just allow them in general?
I I thought that currently a municipality could give permission to a medical storefront. To not be capped in the side in their growth. Size. So to to have, to essentially be quasi dispensary, as Jack was saying.
No.
We could opt into, or did I, did I miss? Different category of dispensary that the town? Okay.
Yeah, it's a separate category, it's one of the, there, those are two of the four opt-in categories, so they are. Different uses, they are different uses that require, they each require opting in. Uh, to allow them. What's that? I couldn't hear that question.
It wasn't for me, that's.
That was some background.
Okay.
Harvey Paul. So so just to repeat from my own clarification. Um, existing registered marijuana caregivers. Cannot operate as dispensers. With without municipal option.
That's exactly right, yeah. And without state authorization either, they it requires a separate state license, and it requires the municipality opt in and allow to allow for the approval.
Uh, just as a comment, um, again echoing Bill's thoughts, the uh. As. As as a, it seems like we still have the strong potential for aggressive. Uh, registered caregivers to push the envelope. Uh, whether it's statutorily described as a dispensary or a retail store, uh, to approach those levels. Uh, but whether it's brinksmanship or whatever you want to call it. Uh, to say I'm a registered caregiver, but not a retail store, even though. It smells like a retail store, it looks like a retail store, and it looks like a retail store.
Yeah, that's right, and so it becomes an enforcement issue, and there's some discretion there, we've sort of gone over some of the analysis you go through if you're trying to determine if someone's a retail store or not. Um, but yes, I think that will continue to be an issue until we get a little more guidance, maybe from the state.
Or or we pass an ordinance.
Or you pass the ordinance being more specific, like the ordinances that we've talked about, yeah.
I think, I think.
Yeah.
That that's, that's where I thought all this was heading, that we needed an ordinance so that we can put some boundaries around. Uh, aggressive uh, uh, parties that are not meeting the town's uh objectives. And we can't count on the state to enforce the law.
Right.
Conclusion is that. That as a track has been suggested that we. Uh, glean. Uh, appropriate standards that have been established by the communities, and then apply them as we see fit. As a joint venture between town council, planning board, interested citizens, and go.
Right. Yeah, and I know that you've been working on that, and you've got some of your own examples, there, there are a lot of examples now out there. Across Maine, there's a, there's a, there's quite a few of these ordinances out there now to look at and borrow from.
As far as you know, Phil, there's, there's not gone through any kind of a court trial at this, at this juncture.
Not that I'm personally aware of, that doesn't mean our cases going on right now, that maybe our firm isn't involved in, or that I'm not aware of through my, you know, just my regular research, but. I'm I'm not aware of it, I've seen some cases go to, uh, you know, zoning boards, for example, but not much further.
I guess the trial was the correct word to be court test.
Right, exactly, so the, what are the outer limits of our regulatory authority that had, that case hasn't been decided yet?
Okay. Um, does anybody else have anything? Um. Very instructive, uh, I have a. Uh, clarity in my mind about direction, and we're uh. Towards the council, Abby.
I think so, did we get everything on the list?
Yeah, yeah, I think this has been very helpful, thank you, Phil.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I think I'm good, I know a lot of this stuff, Phil, is repeat. Things that we've talked about in the past, um, but I think it was a great. At a center recorded session for for everyone to listen to, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, I'm good, thank you, Phil, thank you to the planning board for uh doing all the hard work they're doing, appreciate it. Uh, Bill?
And I, we've said enough tonight, thank you.
Hershey? Jeff?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Uh, David?
No, thank you.
I think that's, that's it for representation of the, the planning board this evening, correct?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so I guess it's a wrap.
Great, thank you, guys.
Thank you, everybody. You're on it, um.